August 6, 2020. Commissioner Hudson, would you lead us in? Well, would you recite the Pledge of Allegiance for all of us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, with liberty and justice in common.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to accounts payable for August 6, 2020.
I approve accounts payable for August 6, 2020, in the amount of $554,065.12.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve accounts payable for August 6, 2020. Do I have any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to manual checks for August 7, 2020.
I move approval of manual checks for August 7, 2020, in the amount of $9,985.06.
Second.
Okay. Motion is to approve manual checks for August 7, 2020. Are there any questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Alrighty, we will do a public comment. Stephanie?
I'm going to do that now. If there's anyone who would like to make public comments, any attendees, you have a little hand icon. You can raise your hand and we will allow you to make public comments. You can also, if you want to message me, if you want to make public comment, you can do that as well. And as I see people raising their hand, I will, I will recognize you and unmute you to make public comments. It looks like we have one person who is interested. And his name is Archibald. I have unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay, thank you. This is Archibald Hoxton, I'm known as Rob, so it's not to be confused with my grandfather, father, or son. And I would like to speak in support of the Jefferson County Solar Amendment. Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak. I'm in favor of allowing Jefferson County farmers the opportunity to use their farmland for the production of solar energy. I write in support of my farming, farming friends who are trying to do this. I believe allowing the use of their rural farmland will accomplish a handful of things. Provide an additional way for farms to remain financially viable in the future. Promote multi-generational farm businesses, keeping kids on the farm if they're interested in doing that. I think that's really important for our culture and our business community. Will reduce the likelihood that the land might be used for housing developments or other non-farm industrial uses. And I think as a benefit as well, it will reduce the carbon footprint of the county and the larger area by producing clean electricity from that land. My understanding is that it won't keep the land from being used for certain farm activities as well, so they can be co-located, which I think is a big positive. And I believe any concerns about use can be moderated as well. So I am in favor of allowing Jefferson County farmers to build solar farms. I think that'd be a great thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great. The next person who has her hand raised is Diane Bluest. Say, Ms. Bluest, do you need to unmute yourself?
Okay, there we go.
Oh, I can hear you.
Does that work? Okay, alright, now let me, now let me find my comments. Oh, God. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to comment on the zoning ordinance change. You know, I've been talking to you for a couple of years now about sustainability, and I don't do that lightly. I was the president of the Fairfax Coalition for Smarter Growth and the head of its Sustainable Rest and Project for several years before I moved up here to Jefferson County in 2014. So as you consider a major and long-lasting change to our zoning ordinance, I urge you to look at the big picture, not just the idea of putting solar panels on some of our precious agricultural land in Jefferson County. We've learned some pretty hard lessons in the last few months. And one of them is that our food system in the United States has some serious flaws. So I hope that all of you will think about food production, local food production, regional food production as you're considering changes to the zoning ordinance. I hope that you will not allow any change that would permit by right transfer of agricultural land to something else. We need to look at each and every proposal for conversion of ag land to another use from an optic of what it will do to our local and regional food supply. From an environmental point of view, the ordinance will need to address stormwater issues created by large impervious surfaces. Obviously, low-maintenance plantings or food crops or grazing crops will help in this regard. And the issue of decommissioning and toxic leaks from broken panels also needs to be addressed. From a social or societal point of view, county residents must have a say in what happens in this county. We must listen to farmers as they tell us they need new sources of income to keep their family farms afloat. And we need to look at the all-important food supply. And I strongly support solar, it just has to be done properly. Thank you so much. Have a good day, everyone.
Thank you.
The next person who has their hand raised is Ryan Sokol.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Go ahead. Yes.
Okay, great. Alright. Hi, everyone. My name is Ryan Sokol and I currently reside in Harper's Ferry, Shenandoah, to be more precise. Yes?
I'm listening. Oops, wait.
What's that?
I think we had some interference. Go ahead, I apologize.
I'm just, I had a written statement last week, but I'm just orally going to say it today so you don't have to read the one that was emailed last week. So anyways, my name is Ryan Sokol, I reside in Harper's Ferry, Shenandoah, to be more precise. Been living here for over four years and active in our community issues. I'm here to speak on the JCC agenda topic on ATV use in Jefferson County. When I first moved here, I was under the assumption that West Virginia state law laws were in effect for every county. It wasn't until later I found out there was a strict and vague ordinance for Jefferson County that, in short, stating all ATVs are not permitted to ride on any roads in Jefferson County. First of all, the ordinance is pretty vague that it doesn't explain if ATVs are able to ride certain roads for certain mileage to get from one place to another, just like the state law currently allows. For example, I have property in Shenandoah where there are times where I would need to take the road to get from one part of my property to the next. And the state law permits that to happen. And another reason I say vague is there's a bunch of different type of roads, as you are all aware of in the county. You know, marked roads, highways unmarked, paved, gravel, et cetera. So, from the way I understood it, from some members of this committee, they say the main reason ATV restrictions were first set in 2004 was due to safety concerns, such as we should not allow ATVs on access roads. Okay, but how is this any different from allowing bicyclists on these same roads? And all they have to do is use hand gestures. Their other thing is motorcycles. They only have two wheels, but they're fully allowed to be on these roads as well. So to me, this hasn't really made any sense, and it seems unfair as a West Virginia resident, and I believe it needs updating. So getting into West Virginia Senate Bill 690 versus the ordinance, who wants to supersede the other, and that is the question that we all have right now. So if I bring up safety concerns again, when off-road vehicles become street legal, they will be registered, insured, brakes, front and rear lights, reflectors, signals, horn, and don't forget mufflers. And I'm going to bring that up again shortly. Allowing special-purpose vehicles, which is what the state calls it, on our county streets will reduce safety concerns, prove accountability for people's actions or accidents by having a tag and insurance coverage. Everybody should be able to utilize any form of vehicle transportation, given that safety measures are in place, such as insurance and registration. I have personally ridden ATV, snowmobiles, boats, basically anything with a motor on it. However, like myself, there are those who are responsible drivers and respectful of people's properties and others who aren't. Therefore, another argument I've heard is to keep the ATV restrictions in place because of quote-unquote disrespectful ATVers. Regardless of having a law or not, there will always be people who are like that, but most of the time, they are respectful. I've also heard comments from my community that the ATV ordinance poses a threat to the community during emergencies. Moreover, this is a mountain community, which means the weather plays a big role. Trees down, power outages, and the big one, snow. Neighbors are always helping each other out, and when in such an emergency, ATVs or other off-road vehicles can play an important role in receiving someone's much-needed prescription or even groceries. I also wanted to get a feel for the community's opinion on allowing off-road vehicles to register as street legal and used on Jefferson County roads. So I created a poll on the Shenandoah Neighbors Facebook group, asking for everybody to vote on this topic. The results as of this morning showed that 73% of residents were in support of allowing this, 18.5 opposed, and 8% were neutral. Thus, the majority support allowing street legal special-purpose vehicles. During last week's meeting, Commissioner Nolan made a statement that residents complained about ATV noise. Anybody knows that if you live off of Mission Road, like myself, noises from ATVs or dirt bikes are barely even noticeable compared to these large diesel engines, big box engines, very loud motorcycle exhausts, and others, way more louder. So I don't understand that argument. To attack ATVs because they are loud is completely unfair. And in this case, should I be fighting against outlawing big-box engines and motorcycles because they annoy me more than ATVs or dirt bikes? The answer to that is no. Commissioner Lorenzetti, you stated residents were in an uproar for ATVs on Mission Road. Well, I am uproaring the fact that the Assistant County Prosecutor has recommended the commission create an amendment to the county ATV ordinance to bypass Senate Bill 690. Why would some of the commissioners first outlaw all ATVs and now considering to take away a state privilege?
Excuse me, Mr. Sokol, you're going over the three minutes for public comment. Can you wrap up quickly?
Right. So I paid my dues, I paid my six-point tax, filing and registration. So I think it's unfair if that were to get reversed. So in conclusion, I ask that you consider my statements and permit Senate Bill 690 to supersede the ordinance and even allow some easing of the current ATV restrictions. Thank you for your time, and a big shout-out to Josh Compton for his support, respect, and professionalism.
Thank you so much. Alright. Any more, Stephanie?
We don't have anyone, anyone else with their hand raised? Is there anyone else last call who would like to make public comments? Alright, I don't see any takers. Let me just go down my list here very quickly. Nope, we don't have any, any more takers.
Okay, and I think numerous county commissioners have received public comment through the county info link and read theirs, those at home, at least I have. I'm assuming those are received by the office and will be put in the record in our, for next week. Is that correct?
Yes, we will put them in the record.
Okay. So.
Excuse me, before we go on, I know, I know item number eight on the agenda. Matt Knott is going to provide some information to the county commission during this discussion. And if it, I mean, if I can get consent for that, he has some information that I think is relative to the discussion. So I was wondering, Matt is gonna, he wondered what time he'd be on. There's really no time on his, on his slot. So I told him that maybe if it was okay with you and the other commissioners, Jane, that maybe we could get him in between five and six, maybe before Nathan. He said he would go back to his office at about 10:30.
Oh.
To join us. So is that okay? Does anyone have any objections to that?
That works for me. What about the others?
No objection.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, you may have to remind me here. You said after 10:30, Matt Knott, yeah.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah.
Commissioner Owen, just for your information, I believe that also the sheriff is standing by to comment on this, as is the prosecutor. So you may want to just hear from them all at that time.
Okay.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Alrighty. And Stephanie, are there any changes to the agenda that you know of?
I do not have any changes to report.
I am going to pull Agenda Item Number Nine that I put on. I was really hoping we could go back to in-person, at least the commissioners in the room. I think we have better discussions for county commission. But, you know, the day I put this on, then we had the highest spike in the, in the state, and nobody else is doing very well either. So I just think it'd be foolish to even consider it at this time. So I'm pulling that unless somebody else has a burning desire to speak on that.
My only comment is that I think it'd be a good issue once school starts.
Yeah.
Assuming school starts.
Right.
I have no problem with it taking off.
Okay. Do we have Madam Assessor online, Stephanie? It's 9:45.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. Okay. Angie, you want to go ahead?
Yes, I will start doing the, presenting these exonerations. The first one is in our 2020 Personal Property Book, Charlestown District. Taxpayer had traded in their 2011 Land Rover for a 2011 Chevy Silverado. So they reported the wrong vehicle. The assessed value is $7,700, tax amount $175.25. Taxpayer is Peter Baltisnick, ticket number 300618.
I move you approve the exoneration, ticket number 300618, as presented.
Second.
Okay, the motion before us is to approve exoneration, ticket number 300618. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, this next one is in our 2020 Personal Property Book, Shepherdstown District. Taxpayer did not own the 2004 Dodge, July 1, 2019, but did not remove it from her form. The assessed value is $2,500, tax amount $56.90. Taxpayer is Sarah Bars, ticket number 315509.
No, go ahead.
I move approval of ticket number 315509, as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Okay. The motion before us is to approve the exoneration for ticket number 315509. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Didn't hear very many votes there. Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Alright, moving on.
This one's in our 2020 Personal Property Book, Ranson Corporation. The taxpayer did not own the 2014 Chevy Cruze, July 1, 2019. Assessed value $3,200, tax amount $88.83. Applicant is Craig Burke, ticket number 314038.
I'll move to exonerate ticket number 314038, as cited by the assessor.
Second.
Okay, the motion before us is to approve exoneration, ticket number 314038. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
This one's in our 2020 Personal Property Book, Shepherdstown District. Taxpayer did not own the 2014 Jeep, July 1, 2019. Assessed value $12,700, tax amount $289.05. And the applicant is Angela Christman, ticket number 315783.
I move you approve the exoneration, ticket number 315783, as presented.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us is to approve exoneration, ticket number 315783. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, the next three exonerations is for the same taxpayer. And he reported the wrong vehicle for three years, so we did fix her up in new bills for three years.
Okay.
This first one is in our 2020 Personal Property Book, Ranson Corporation. She did not own the 2009 Nissan Altima, July 1, 2019. Assessed value $2,200, tax amount $61.08. And the taxpayer is Anna Sloan, ticket number 315116.
I didn't hear all of that, ticket number 315.
116.
Okay, 116.
I'll move, I'll move to approve the exoneration for ticket number 315116, as presented by the assessor.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us is to approve the exoneration, ticket number 315116. Questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next?
This one's in our 2019 Personal Property Book, Ranson Corporation. Taxpayer did not own the '09 Nissan Altima, July 1 of '18. Assessed value $2,500, tax amount $70.30. The applicant is Anna Sloan, ticket number 315128.
I'll move to approve the exoneration for ticket number 315128, as presented.
Second.
Alright. Properly moved and seconded, approve exoneration, ticket number 315128. You have any questions, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
This one's in our 2018 Personal Property Book, Ranson Corporation. Applicant did not own the 2009 Nissan Altima, July 1, 2017. Assessed value $3,200, tax amount $91.20. The applicant is Anna Sloan, ticket number 314994.
I'll move for the exoneration of ticket number 314994, as set out by the assessor.
Second.
Okay. Motion before us is to approve the exoneration, ticket number 314994. Questions, discussion?
I just have a question. And Angie, do, do they have to bring in any kind of proof that they did?
Yes, yes, yes. She has proof. And then we looked up what she did have, and we made her three new bills.
Okay.
Because the vehicle was newer, what she did have.
Okay.
But yes, they bring in proof.
Okay, thanks.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, I thought so, but I just wanted to clarify.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So the motion before us is to approve this exoneration. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
This last one is in our 2020 Real Estate Book, Charlestown Corporation. The homestead exemption was missed and should have been on the real estate. The assessed value is $20,000, tax amount $276.80. Applicant, applicant is Sandra Cavalier, ticket number 7885.
I'll move approval of the exoneration for ticket number 7885.
I'll second that. Motion before us is to approve exoneration for ticket number 7885. Do we have any questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Anything else, Angie?
No, that is all of them, and enjoy your day.
Alright, thank you so much. Stephanie, or we have Laura Storm, she was on here earlier.
Yes, we do have, she's still here. Let me unmute her and send her a request if she wants to.
Hi, good morning.
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 Can you hear me?
Yes.
I got all kinds of things popping up on my screen, so.
I sent you a webcam request, Laura, if you wanted to, if you wanted to use your webcam. There you go.
There you are, okay, good.
Good morning, hi. It's so nice to talk to people without a mask on. Be it through Zoom or not. I come before you. July 14, my Chief Judge, Judge Lawrenson, did up an administrative order of designating the Ranson Civic Center as an alternate courtroom. And we use that only for jury selection. We do not have adequate, even though we have the biggest courtroom, I think, in the state, it's still not big enough for me to bring in 40 to 50 jurors with proper social distancing. So I have worked with the city of Ranson, and they have been fabulous in allowing us to use their civic center because they do still have it closed down to the public. So we've already had our first jury selection, went beautifully. Everybody was, kept safe throughout it. But I have this administrative order, and it was brought to my attention from some circuit clerks of a older section of code, if you will, Ralph, you'll know about this. 5137 is talking about places for sessions of courts. And now this code was enacted back in the mid-1800s. And the last time it was challenged was 1951. So it is quite old, but it does have a little piece in there that says, "When the county, when the courthouse of a county is destroyed or is not in a condition to be occupied, such court shall hold its sessions at places as may be appointed by order of the county court," which is you all. So Judge Hammerfield's, my administrative order covers me. But me, out of abundance of caution, I have presented to you all an order from my county commission. I'm all about making sure the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. So this order that's presented to you all allows us to do just that, use the Ranson Civic Center strictly for jury selection purposes. And we are able to get through those quite quickly. The one we just did on Tuesday was two hours. We were in and out. Maintenance has been working with me. They've come over to disinfect before and after. Sheriff Doherty with his bailiffs, um, everything just went perfectly. So I could not have been more pleased. But this, um, order from the county commission was drafted up by Judge Carl Dunn in Pendleton County. And the clerks had shared this, so I snagged that through Jefferson, all through that. Judge Hammer has approved it, so I am asking the county commission if I can have their signature on that as well.
Laura, let me ask a question. You say juries, what about grand juries? Because you usually have fifty or sixty people in for that.
No, sir, we do not. Grand jury, I only have eighteen people in and we have adequate spacing in the courtroom for that. Judge Hammer has marked off six foot. So we use from the jury box through the entire courtroom to the other side jury box. And we, it ran perfectly when we did that in June, so we did not.
I'm not talking about the periodic grand jury, but when you have the initial selection of the grand jury at the beginning of the year, don't you bring fifty or sixty people in for that?
No, sir, I do not. I bring in twenty-five.
Okay.
So we're still good on that. Um, I'm, we'll see, I guess, come January if we're unable to do that in the courtroom. But when we did that, well, we did it in January before all this happened. Um, I'll, I guess, cross that bridge there, but I believe, yes, sir, we have enough space for twenty-five in the courtroom to do that initial selection come January.
Right. And is there, I remember there's a problem with the sheriff at one time with the idea that he's outside of the county seat. Is there any statutes or anything like that and as far as courts go?
Um, no, the only thing that came up was this fifty-one-three-seven regarding that with the county seat. There is a sentence within it that says, um, some other place as prescribed by law or lawfully appointed. So I have my administrative order for that and I'm asking for the county commission's, um, county court order as well. And that will cover us, hundred percent.
Well, I, I, I think it's, you know, I'm glad you've been able to find an alternative place.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll move that we approve the order for the use of alternative facility for jury selection and authorize, uh, the commission president to sign the order.
Second.
Okay. Uh, do we have any questions or discussion on this? I see Mr. Cochran, does, do you need to offer any comments or we're all set to go here? Looks all in order to me.
I reviewed the order, it looked, um, you know, adequate to me.
Okay. Any other commissioners have questions? Okay, the motion before us is to, uh, approve, uh, of the orders, uh, entitled, use of alternative facility for jury selection. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Second thing I have before you, um, has to do with parking here in our city. Down here in Charlestown. Um, I have had a wonderful, um, gig going with the city of Charlestown for quite a while, being able to use the, um, parking lot next to the police station. Well, they are no longer there. They have put a lot of money into that parking lot to fix it up. They enacted back in April, Article three-sixty-five regarding parking district for the city of Charlestown. Quite expensive. And within that, they're permitting out their lots and spaces around. Trying to generate revenue for the upkeep of these parking lots and the parking throughout town. They have replaced all the meters with, um, very up-to-date electronic meters. You now can pay over your phone through an app. They created a downtown parking district map, um, which is absolutely fabulous. I love this for myself. But with that, I have lost that parking lot. If, as a free place for my jurors to park at in an, uh, in an effort to keep them safe after trials. They're always escorted out by the bailiffs to their vehicles. Nobody is allowed to leave the courthouse until all jurors are in their car and safely on the road. So in talking with Chief Butcher and the mayor of the city of Charlestown, they are requesting that, um, we create a new program, which I'm halfway there. But with this, I need funding from the county commission in order to fully implement this. We had kind of gone through ransom numbers. And what they are asking for is what it would cost if somebody else was using those parking spaces during the day. They, they don't want to lose money and I do respect that. They are asking us to pay the price of what they would collect normally. And what it is, is two dollars a day for that eight-hour spot is the revenue they would generate. I went through and I created the numbers, if you will. So right now I have a civil trial going. I have eight people in our courthouse at two dollars a day. And they will be serving for three days. So that's a total of forty-eight dollars. That's what it would cost to allow our jurors to park closer to the courthouse in a more secure area. Criminal trials, uh, I generally have fourteen people who serve on that. And I kind of ran some numbers, so if that's two dollars a day per person, that's twenty-eight dollars a day. So say that trial ran for four days, that would be a hundred and twelve dollars. So if I have, say, ten criminal trials in a year, I don't think that's ever happened. But if I did, that would be one thousand one hundred and twenty dollars for one year cost to allow our jurors to park in downtown Charlestown. Now, with all of that said, and Ralph can back me up on this, I know, um, excuse me, Commissioner Lorenzetti, I apologize, um, we don't have that many trials. We don't, but we do have one and a half judges now. So Judge McLaughlin is down here every week for a, a day or two at least in between. And she's scheduling a lot of jury trials because she's doing much more than just juvenile cases. She's also doing criminal cases. So I have the potential for more trials to happen. But Jefferson County, normally, we don't have that many jury trials. And now, now that I've said it and it's on the record, I'm probably going to get slammed, but, um, I guess I'm asking the county commission, I spoke with Sandy McDonald, uh, the deputy administrator last week. And we kind of were talking this over. She was going to get with Michelle Gordon and see if she could find a thousand, twelve-hundred dollars for me that maybe can go into my budget. That when I have these jurors come into town, I can create the paperwork necessary to present to the county commission to request payment to the city of Charlestown. I would have a parking pass program with specific dates on it. The parking enforcement officer is Ron Weaver. And I do know him, and we were working together just on this trial here. We color code the pass, we mark on it that it's a juror, we assign a number to it. And it has specific dates, this juror is parking. Now, the juror can use any of the parking lots or anywhere on this map that has eight-hour metered parking. They would not get a ticket if they have my little bag in the window. And I share that with him so he knows what's coming forward. So my, after all of my talking here to give you the backstory, my request to the county commission is if I could have a, I need a separate line item for twelve-hundred dollars in my budget so that I can pay for parking for our jurors that come into the city of Charlestown.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. It seems entirely reasonable request to work the problem out and make sure our jurors are safe and able to park. Because I know downtown parking can be frustrating at times, um, if you're more than just running into a shop. So, um, Stephanie, I, is Michelle online and give us ideas of where that money can come from?
Having speaker problems, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Can you hear me or me?
It's muffled.
No, no. Can you hear me or me?
Sort of. Yeah.
We haven't.
We haven't.
Cold severance.
Old severance, okay.
If I can ask a question of Laura.
Sure.
Back when we first purchased the prosecutor's building, we had a parking lot that was part of the deal for two or three years. I don't think we still have the lease on it, but only one or two people ever used that parking lot behind the APU building. Do you know if that's still available at all?
This is the first I'm hearing of that. Um, I thought all of that property was owned by APU.
Well, we had, as part of our purchase, we had like a, a three-year lease on the parking lot. And quite honest with you, only one or two people ever used it. I, I'm, it's, as far as I know, nobody ever used, still doesn't use it. And I'm just wondering if, if we, if we're really strapped for spaces, whether that would be available. It, it may cost too much, I have no idea.
Well, and as I recall, it, there weren't that many spaces. I mean, I mean, it was more for the staff of the prosecutor's office, but, um.
Yeah, that's what it was. Yeah, that's what it was designated for, but I don't think they ever used it. They usually park right beside the building because they also have parking passes, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's something to look into if we, you expect larger-than-normal, whatever, jury or selection or there's a special event or something at the courtroom that, you know, we would need to research other, other parking availability. Do any other commissioners have questions?
Well, I don't have any questions. I know parking has always been a problem. And, um, so, you know, for jurors, it has always been a problem. Just had to park kind of wherever they could find a spot. But with the new parking regulations in effect, I think, you know, it may have an impact on, on parking. And, um, so I think that's probably, you know, I tried to get the commission for years to pay for parking passes for jurors and it never really worked out, so, uh, but I, I would support twelve-hundred dollars, yeah.
That may be a question, Patsy. Uh, and I agree with this, it's something that needs to be done. When I was prosecutor, it was, it was a hassle. But, uh, I guess the question comes up, what about magistrate juries?
Well, the same thing applies for them. I am the administrator of the jury program for the county. Um, this is much more than just for circuit court. Magistrate court trials have six jurors and this would go with them as well. I think last year I had two juries in magistrate court and theirs usually lasts about a half a day. So I just don't, I, they don't have a lot of juries either. But it applies for Jefferson, for the circuit court as well as magistrate court.
Well, thank you for clarifying that, thank you.
Well, I'm going to make the motion that we, um, create the line item, um, in the, uh, circuit clerk's budget for parking expenses for jury trials and use, um, money from coal severance. Uh, and, um, this year put in twelve-hundred dollars and we'll see what that does for us.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any more questions or comments now that the motion is on the floor? All those in favor of, um, creating the parking, uh, line item in the circuit clerk's budget of twelve-hundred dollars from the coal severance fund, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really do appreciate it.
All right, have a good day.
Thank you, you too, bye-bye.
Dan, can we check my mic, is it working better now?
Yes, it is.
Sandy gave me a, an external mic, so that's. So I just wanted, thank you.
All right. Let's see, let's go, let's see if we can get number three done before ten-thirty. Interviews and appointments to the Jefferson County Community Criminal Justice Board. Seven, three-year terms. Ending July third, twenty-twenty-three. Okay, do we have anybody online for the interviews, Stephanie?
Uh, yes, we do, um, we have, well, Dale was on.
Okay.
But I don't see him anymore. We have Steve Cox, he's here.
All right. There was a, uh, an applicant, Gilbert Hyman and Jan Hafer and Chris Stray. Are any of them online?
Um, I have Ms. Hafer. I do not have Chris Stray or Gilbert. Let me check other, let me check my other list over here, I've got two lists.
Yeah.
I have Chris Stray. Oh, I do have, um, Mr. Hyman over here. So let me elevate him to a panelist. Move him over here, okay. So right now we have Mr. Cox, we have Mr. Hyman and Ms. He, Ms. Hafer.
Okay, let's, let's go ahead with, uh, those and, uh, let's get, uh, Mr. Cox online.
I'm here, can you hear me?
We, we can.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Cox, thank you for your application.
Ma'am, thank you for having me.
Uh, I can, if you can turn your volume up some way, I can barely hear you, so.
I've been having connection issues. I'm actually in my vehicle and to put a blower on to my left, because it was getting hot. Is this sounding any better for you now?
A little better, yeah, yeah. Um, is, if you know the Criminal Justice Board, there's a lot of different slots that, uh, they want a member with background in mental health, somebody else with a background in substance abuse, someone else that represents organizations for the rights of victims, three-at-large, and another is a public defender or an attorney. What slot do you feel you would fill or could fill on the board?
Reading through the available positions, I felt that one of the three at-large members would be most appropriate for me, seeing as how a lot of those others are very, um, devoted to a certain profession. And you have my bio in front of you, you'll see that most of my stuff is done on law enforcement. And, uh, as of recently. And as of recently, just helping my clients out.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for Mr. Cox?
Um, just, the only question I have for him, I think he's answered the others. Is, will, is attendance going to be an issue? Are you able to attend the meetings at the appointed time?
There shouldn't be much problem with that at all. I am, uh, my full-time employment or income is my personal business. So I have my own schedule.
Okay, thank you.
I guess I'll just bring this up, are, are you the Chris Cox that's a candidate for sheriff?
And that would be Steve Cox, and yes.
Okay, that's what I want to make sure. But so you're not, you're not running for any office at this point then?
Commissioner Lawrence Eddy, this is Steve Cox. And yes, I am.
Okay, you are. I'm sorry, I don't know why I wrote. Assuming you're elected and that, that may give a conflict in the, may give a conflict to position, do you have any problem with only serving for three months if that's the case?
I'll put my time towards it if, if, if I'm elected in three months, then I'll put my time towards that. If there is a, a conflict and I need to sit down, that's what I'll do.
I, I'm not saying that, well, I think the sheriff at times has been on the board and sometimes he hasn't been on the board, so.
I don't have a problem with it. I, I think that both of those is something that, that an elected sheriff could be a part of.
And well, let me ask you, and I'm not going to ask you to make a campaign speech, but how do you think the juvenile justice board helps with our, our problems with people who violate the law?
Your question is specific to the juvenile system, is it?
No, just adults, juveniles, whatever.
So re- reading through there, it looks like there's a lot of ideas that come about from the board to help with alternative sentences or sense sentencing. And, and looking for addiction services, which is something that, like I said before, in the last two years of owning my company. Probably 50% of my time is dealt with clients and obtaining addiction services. In fact, it's Monday of this week, Sunday and Monday, I've had two clients that I've worked with and asked almost entire Tuesday and Wednesday. Getting them transported to and obtaining beds for them. Uh, so I, it, that's why I, when I was asked earlier about what position I felt I would be best suited for. One of those three at-large members that if I remember correctly, I don't have the exact name, was specifically talking about addiction.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Do any other commissioners have questions for Mr. Cox?
This is Josh. I don't have anything further. They were answered.
All right. Caleb?
Same. He answered all my questions.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cox. We have a few other people to interview.
Thank you, commissioners, for your time.
Uh huh. All right, Stephanie, who else do we have online? You need to unmute yourself. Uh, we can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now? It says, okay.
Yeah.
Yes. I won't, I maybe I won't. So I just want to let you know that there are different requirements for the day report board. The at-large positions are, for the people who are eligible for the at-large position would be Mr. Cox, Dale Manuel, Jan Hafer and Gil Hyman. Those are the ones that, for the at-large positions. And then you're also appointing for the defense attorney position, which would be Mr. Stray. So I just, so the next person we have, I'm just going to go in order that they appear on my screen, is Mr. Manuel.
Good morning, Mr. Manuel. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, good.
I had to act down here. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm assuming you want to apply for the at-large position on the criminal justice board. Is that correct?
That is correct and.
Okay. Now tell me why.
I would appreciate my opportunity or an opportunity to continue my service. As you know, I've, I've been with the day report board since its, its origin. Right now, the day report is on the cutting edge, I believe, for day reports throughout the whole United States. We're pretty much a, an example of technology being used to help those people with addiction. I mean, we have the neurofeedback, we have telemedicine, we have the bridge, which helps for those people detoxing. We have all kinds of services that are available to the people of Jefferson County. Right now, we're making a change with the new executive officer and new services. Some of you may have read today in the newspaper about the DUI program that's coming online. I think I can continue to do the, the job. And I have been appointed as the presiding officer right now. And I really enjoy that, that service to the people of Jefferson County and hope that you will allow me to continue to do so.
Okay.
I guess, this is Patsy. The only question I have for you, Dale, is as chairman of that organization, I'm assuming you've been able to attend the meetings and haven't had a problem getting there?
Absolutely. No problem whatsoever. Have to go outside, sign some documents today after this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions from other commissioners?
This is Josh. I, I think Dale does a good job on that board. Just a quick clarification from Rhonda. The sheriff serves on the criminal justice board under statute, so as the treasurer. So if Mr. Cox was elected, he'd automatically be a board member? Just for clarification. That's all I have. I think Dale does a good job on that board.
Okay. Caleb, you have any questions for Mr. Manuel? Or Ralph?
Uh, I was just going to say, having previously served on it before Ralph, I believe serves on it now. I believe Dale did a good job there, so.
Okay. All right.
And I'll say the same thing, the short period I've been on it.
Okay. All right. No further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Manuel.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Have a good day.
You too.
All right, who's next, Stephanie?
Uh, Mr. Hyman, can you hear me? Yeah, Mr. Hyman.
Hello, Mr. Hyman?
Hello?
Yes, good morning. This is.
Good morning. Hello, Jane.
Yes, um, we're doing interviews for the criminal, community criminal justice board, also known as the day report board. What position do you feel you would fill on the, I think we all feel you would be the, an at-large member. Are you in agreement with that assessment if appointed?
Yes, it's the at-large position that I've served for three and a half years. And much like Dale, I'm very happy to do that. And I'm proud to serve with Rhonda and the new executive director, Kelly Franklin. Um, I've been able to work with the Dale and the sheriff and the county prosecutor. I've visited the ERJ as well as the juvenile center in Davis and Augusta. And there's an awful lot of things that we've been able to put in place. The telemed and the, the other services we provide for adjacent counties. I think we're doing a very good job in showing everyone in the state how Jefferson County can provide greater public safety by how we treat our prisoners. And how, when they come back to our communities, they can become taxpayers and good citizens. And I'd like to continue to do that.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Hyman from other county commissioners?
This is Patsy, and the only question I have is attendance, Mr. Hyman. Have you had any trouble getting to the meetings so far?
No, I live in Charlestown and I have been able to make, I think, 90% of the meetings, if not 100. And I will, I am retired and I'm happy to be there.
Thank you.
This is Ralph Lawrence Eddy. I noticed that you volunteer to prison ministries and transition assistance. How does day report work into that?
I've been on the board, as I said, with Rhonda Eddy for three and a half years. At the same time, I was working with Bob Schefner at the Jefferson Community Ministry. And there are times where the people that they serve also wind up being in need of services from the state and from the county. And that's why I've been serving on the board to find and locate housing for when they are released. And programs to support their recovery.
Thank you.
Other commissioners have questions for Mr. Hyman?
I don't have any. I'll revert back to my previous comment. I think the current board members are doing a very good job.
Okay. Caleb?
Nope, no questions asked.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hyman. And thank you for your service too, and for reapplying. We appreciate any and all volunteers.
Glad to be here.
Okay. Uh, Stephanie, do we have Ms. Hafer on the line?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Jan, can you go ahead?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Good morning, everyone, and I'm glad I have an opportunity to be here with you and answer any of your questions about my desire to serve as an at-large member on the community corrections board.
Okay. So my question is, is why do you want to do this? What inspires you to step up to the plate?
Well, I think number one, as I ended my letter to you all last week, I think it was last week. I have personal experience. I have a family member who suffered from addiction and thank God, has been in recovery for more than a couple of years, doing very well. And so I got to see it from a personal perspective. And I could see from my own experience, uh, programs, attitudes that need to be supported. Secondly, I worked at the day report as a neurofeedback specialist. And I learned a lot through that. Of course, I interacted directly with the clients. And I learned about the importance of this kind of program and helping people improve their lives. Uh, I'm a recovery coach, so of course that is very valuable. And as you could see from my letter, I had the opioid crisis committee for my church. And so the beginnings of that was just to inform our congregation. But then we broadened out into the Shepherdstown community, done that. So it's, it's a variety of experiences, but the, at the heart of it, it starts with my own personal experience.
Thank you for sharing that. Other commissioners, questions for Ms. Hafer?
This is Patsy, and I'll ask Ms. Hafer the same question that I've asked the other candidates. And that is, will you be able to attend the meetings when they're held? And I'm not exactly sure when they are, but can you get there?
Yes, ma'am.
It's pretty important if you're a board member, you know, one of the main responsibilities is showing up, so.
Absolutely.
Other questions from commissioners?
Uh, could I add something? I forgot. I didn't, is this all right?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. Um, I didn't put it in my letter because I was concentrating on the volunteer experience I've had. But, um, you know, I'm a, my whole career, professional career was as a teacher and a teacher trainer. My specialty was working with families and parents of deaf children all over the state of Maryland. And of course, I taught a gall of that, but to train the teachers. But that, my knowledge of family support and parent education, I think would be an asset to the community corrections board. Because often that parent-family piece is not fully developed. And then, for what it's worth, I'm very supportive of seeking accessibility for all people. And I'm fluent in American Sign Language. And so that might be a different piece to consider too.
Okay, thank you. Other commissioners have questions for Ms. Hafer?
Look, that's, Jan, do you have any current connection with the Day Report Center?
No, I don't.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Comptons or Hudson?
I don't have anything further now.
Okay. All righty, Stephanie, anyone else online to be interviewed?
Not for the at-large positions. Actually, we don't have anyone else to be interviewed, but those are the at-large positions.
Yeah.
And then you have another appointee who would be your defense attorney, who is not here.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted to make clear. Okay, so it looks like we have four people that would qualify to serve at the, as, as at-large members. So I'll take nominations for board members, at-large board members.
Well, this is Patsy, and I'm going to nominate Gil Hyman, Dale Manuel and Jan Hafer for the three, for three of the at-large positions.
I'm going to second that, and I'll make a comment starting with Mr. Cox. There, he's in a race for sheriff and I hope if whoever wins the sheriff does become active in the, the day report. And if he doesn't get elected, I hope he applies again if he doesn't get nominated this time, because we do need people involved. That's all.
Okay. Now, just procedurally, Patsy, you said nominated.
Yes, I did.
And Ralph seconded it. Is that a motion now or?
Well, I, I can make it a, a motion to approve the nomination for Gil Hyman, Dale Manuel and Jan Hafer.
Okay, and Mr. Lawrence Eddy, are you seconding that?
I am.
Okay. It was opening the floor to nominations, does also, so I'll just want to make sure if there's any additional nominations besides the motion on the floor.
Well, let me just clarify that those are for the at-large members.
Okay.
Okay, I want to be specific about that. I don't know if I mentioned it before or not.
Right. Hearing no other nominations, the motion before us is to appoint Mr. Hyman, Mr. Manuel and Ms. Hafer as at-large members on the community criminal justice board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Now, I have a question about, about Mr. Stray. I mean, I wish we were able to interview him because I just wanted to be sure that he, I know he's been on the board. Apparently, he has been on that board, and I just wonder if his attendance has been, has been good. So it's kind of hard.
Patsy, this is Ralph. I was at the last, I think the last board meeting, and Chris was there. He indicated that he, I believe, that he would like to continue. I'll do make a comment. I think he just got elected to city council in Shepherdstown. Hopefully, that wouldn't matter, but I, I know he, he did win one of the seats.
Okay.
Patsy, the executive director was, or the new director was on here. I don't know if she would have any
Okay.
information about his attendance.
Yeah, she doesn't mind my asking. I'd love to know that. That's, that's one of the, it's critical, in my opinion, if you're a member of the board, your first obligation is to, in accepting that position, is to commit to the meetings unless there's something that you just cannot attend for. So, and I know sometimes it's hard, especially as an attorney, you never know when you're going to be in court. So I just want to be sure that he's been able to attend the meetings. And I'm sure that would apply to any, any attorney.
And also, I did receive a text from Prosecutor Hart, who indicated that Chris has been very helpful on that board. He's been, that he has been very helpful and that he led the hiring process for Ms. Franklin.
Okay.
All right. Oh, it sounds like he's an active member than a participatory meeting member.
This is Kelly Franklin, if you can hear me. I did talk to Mr. Stray earlier in the week, and he is interested in remaining on the board. His attendance has been great.
Okay. Thank you for that. We have his letter of interest, but, you know, we did not know about his attendance. So I'm, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion that we appoint Chris Stray as the attorney, on the, a practicing attorney on the Community Criminal Justice Board.
Second.
Okay. Do we have any questions or discussion?
A quick thing, this is Josh. Just noticing the law firm, I don't know if, he's not in any open litigation with a county at present time, is he?
I don't think we have any, all of that litigation for us has been resolved. I think he's involved in some litigation with the city of Ranson, but not, that firm isn't involved in the current litigation with us right now.
Okay, thank you.
All right. All right. Any more questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of appointing Chris Stray to Community Criminal Justice Board, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'm going to, I'm going to vote no, this is Josh.
Okay. So from what I can tell, the motion passes four to one with Commissioner Compton in the negative. Okay. So we're done with that agenda item. And I know they were trying to work with Mr. Knott to get him online with, talking about Agenda Nine, Number Eight, going a little bit out of order. Is that happening right now, Stephanie, or should we move on?
I am on here if you guys can hear me.
Oh, there he is.
Okay.
He's here, it looks like.
And Commissioner Tab, I believe also the sheriff and the prosecutor are also online to discuss this issue.
Okay. Good. All right. Patsy, you want to lead us off on Agenda Item Number Eight?
Well, I will. This was Josh's item last week. And after we got some emails, or I got some emails from some of folks that live down along the river, I spoke with Matt Knott about the issue, and he was able to provide a lot of backstory to all of this. So I would like to have that discussion today to see if there's some way that the commission has any, any ability to help resolve those issues, make the necessary contacts to, to help with the, the litter and the parking and the other issues. So I know Matt has the backstory on that, so I'd like for, if it's okay with commissioners, I'd like for Matt to, to explain some of the problems that he sees as, as a river rider, as the owner of River Riders. So if there's no objection.
No objection here.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Please go ahead, Mr. Knott.
Okay, thank you for having me today. I, I don't know, can you guys see me or not? I mean, I can see all of you guys, but I don't know. I guess not.
I don't see, I don't see you, but I hear you loud and clear.
You might have to make sure your webcam is on.
I just, I'll just go to me, I don't know where you click that.
It's, it's in a little, on my screen, it moves around. It's on a little square on the lower left-hand side. And it's webcam is the first thing listed, and you have to click on that and make sure it's turned on.
Looks like a little beauty camera.
Okay, I'm on my phone, so maybe this doesn't.
Yeah. I sent you, Matt, I sent you an audio pin that would allow you, it won't let me turn your webcam on until you enter the audio pin. But we can hear you just fine. But if you want to do that, I just sent you the audio pin to enter.
Okay. Well, I'll just talk and then if, you know, if later. So I guess the, the Millville Dam is a hydroelectric project that's been there for many years, and it's licensed by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, which is called FERC. And the operator of the dam has a lot of obligations as part of their ability to put a concrete structure across the river, basically. And one of those obligations is to provide recreational access. It's a very common thing in the United States. Many places where you go recreate a lake or something like that, it's mandated, if there's a dam that created that lake, that the operator provides access to the public. And that's basically what you have in Millville. A lot of people don't think even though there is a dam there or that there is a lake behind that dam, because the access to it is not very good. It's actually, to get on the lake, you have to go over to, it's called Forge Run, over on the mountain to get to it. That's the only way you can access the lake, and it's not used very much at all. But in addition to the, what they call upstream recreation, which is the recreation on the lake, they also, also have to provide for downstream recreation, which is recreation below the dam. And it's very common in the river industry to have this type of access. And it's pretty common in the rafting industry specifically to, to have access to a river below a dam because a lot of times they will regulate the flow on the river with the dam. There's a lot of really popular places that have this. So anyway, it's a really common thing in the United States. They just went through their relicensing in 2018, and it's for 50 years. So the next time will be 2068. And I was the only person I know of locally that actually commented on it. I, I didn't see anybody else. There were other people that commented, but I didn't see anybody else locally. But anyway, they have a recreation management plan as part of their license through FERC. So they have to provide that access as part of that. So when you go down to Millville, there's actually two separate kind of areas there. There's the area that's right in the tail race of the, where they produce the hydroelectric. There's a fishing access there. And there's also the access that the outfitters use where drop off people for tubing. We don't actually do rafting there, but we do for tubing. And then there's, then there's a picnic area, and then there's another access where historically there was a boat ramp, although right now it's been destroyed for years and nowhere to fix it. That's the area where a lot of people have been parking recently. It's actually not a new issue. I'm sure the sheriff can attest to the number of times there are calls for cars parking on the road down there in that area on the weekends. But it has definitely been amplified a lot this year. I'm assuming due to COVID and people not being able to access other places, almost all of the cars that are there are from out of state. I hardly ever see a West Virginia tag down there. It's mostly Maryland, Virginia, and DC tags. But, I mean, in all honesty, that's how it's been forever. We've been accessing there for 20 years, and it's almost always not locals down there. I do occasionally, but it's pretty rare. Historically, it's really only been a traffic issue on the holidays, for just Memorial Weekend, July 4th, and Labor Day weekend. But this year, it has been every single weekend and considerably more than usual. The interesting thing is, though, they are aware of it, that the guy who manages the dam, he's been down there a lot taking pictures and stuff. And he's been there for 30-some years, the same person. And this weekend, they had a hired security guard there, and the problem literally disappeared. They allowed a max of like 15 cars there. Normally, there are like maybe 100 cars, but there's only parking for probably 25. And they allowed a max of 15 cars down there this weekend, and literally the problem there just disappeared in one day. They had hired security guards that sat down there and regulated the number of cars that came in and out. And my take, that's really what needs to happen. But the, but the operator of the dam is required to do it by their permit. So, you know, obviously, they are able to generate revenue off selling the electric, and as part of that, they have to provide the access. All of the access points are in bad repair. We have offered to pay to fix them out of our own money, and we have, we don't ever get a straight answer from them. They have fixed them a few times in the past, but right now, both the access that we use and the actual boat ramps that are there are in, I mean, it's like a three-foot ditch in the middle of the boat ramp that's the, where you can put actually like a little John boat or something. So they also are required to provide the picnic facilities, the waste removal, all of those things require them the permit. And, I mean, the picnic tables that are there were there 20 years ago when we started using it. They are the same picnic tables, the same trash cans. There are, I think, are two trash cans, and it's a pretty big area. And then there, there's also a dumpster there for the potty now. Those have been there for the last like two or three years, I think. But it's one of those areas, it's, in my take, it doesn't get used that much by locals. But now it's like, you know, it, it has been like prohibitive this summer for anyone to use it locally. We, there, there, you, all this information is available publicly. You can look up their FERC license online. You can print off or download their, their entire license that has all these things I'm talking about in it. I think the project is 2343 is the number. It's called Millville Hydroelectric. And basically, they had to provide the access there. They also provide the access with what's called Big Eddie, which is just above the dam. That has also been terribly overused this year and huge amounts of trash. People parking on the road, I mean, it honestly has been a disgrace this year, like just the volume of trash and everything. But it's literally just because I think all these people are coming here because they have nowhere else to go. And like I said, if we somehow regulate the mass parking, like literally the problem just disappeared on Saturday. And it, it's been like that all summer and it's all in one day, so. Anyway, I know lots of other information, I'm turning on too long. I'm happy to answer questions. You know, there's three outfitters that access there. We have all done it for many years. We do, you know, generate sales tax revenue with all of our users. We also all charge 25 cents a person to every person that we give to, called friends who send it over. They do stream flow monitoring. They're the ones that like monitor like the algae blooms and stuff like that in the river. So, you know, we are contributing in those ways, you know. The state is generating revenue off every person that we put in the river.
Okay, well, thank you for that background information. I went for a ride over in that area yesterday afternoon, and there are lots of tubes on the river, but there, in every little, you know, pull-off place by the road, there was a bag of trash. And I think that's some of what we're going to focus on now. And I'd like to hear from the sheriff. And I think too, DNR might play a part in getting at least the trash problem taken care of.
Can I mention something real quick with that specifically? So the, where that parking area is, is the limit of the hydroelectric project. As soon as you go past that parking area, it is owned by Millville Quarry, Aggreg Industries. And the people that generate, who work at the hydroelectric, they will not pick up one piece of trash past the edge of their property. So most of that trash you're seeing, I'm pretty sure is trash that is on property owned by the Millville Quarry, not this hydroelectric project. They, they, every Monday, they always have for years, a person comes every Monday and cleans up all the trash every week. But they don't do any that's not on the property.
Okay, well, thank you for that clarification. Yeah. Sheriff, do you have any comments?
Remember the commission, Mr. Knott got most of this exactly the way we see it as well. But it's become a real issue in the last month or so because of the number of people. There, there is a limitation on how many cars they wanted to have parked there at the old dam site. And as a result of our conversation with them, they have turned and said, okay, then we'll limit that to 25 people, and they've hired two security guards. Mr. Knott is correct that what happens is every Monday, they literally were taking out like a dump truck load of trash. People were coming, bringing all their, their stuff with them, and, and they're leaving it there. They also talked to First Energy because they own on the other side of the road. And people were going and both parking on their property, which they did not want. And they were also frankly using it as their public bathroom, which they didn't want as well. So they've now put no trespassing signs up, and, and we're enforcing no trespassing on there. Our problem has been that so many people have tried to park there, and, and the road is not very forgiving. And people are out on the roadway, and the problem is that you have, if it's an emergency vehicle or other vehicles, many times the roads are blocked and you can't get vehicles past. So in the last couple of weeks, we've gone down, we've cited some people, and we've, we've towed some cars away as a result of that. We think with the, with the security folks that Eagle, Eagle Creek Renewable Energy, I guess is what the name of the organization is, with them saying they're going to have two people there to do it, with our guys going down there and trying to sort of make sure that people aren't improperly parking along the way. And, you know, obviously, if we see somebody, you know, leaving their trash around, we'll obviously take action against, against them as well. Local property owners have been in touch with us as well. I think they generally are thinking we're, we're doing the best we can with what we have. But, you know, truth is, we have sometimes several hundred people down there at a time. And with all the illegal parking, and we've had some motor vehicle hits runs, somebody hits your car and they drive off, they don't stop. And you come out and you've got a ding in your car, or the offender's been hit, and you're contacting us about that as well. So we're trying to be as aggressive as we can to stop the illegal parking in, in the first place. And we're trying to enforce it, and we're, but I say with the new security folks that are down there, that's helpful. And the other part is, what Mr. Knott was talking about is with the, you know, with the folks with, I guess Adventure Center and, and River Riders coming and getting a place to drop off. Obviously, we can't get down the road with people illegally parked, and they would have real difficulty obviously getting in as people just continue to park improperly on place. So we think that part is helpful. Two days ago, we were down on the other end of the property that he's talking about. Uh, two days ago, we were down on the other end of the property that he's talking about as authority. And we, we, we cited a couple of people for illegally parking down there and, and, and trespassing on the quarry site. Um, you know, truth is, and he's absolutely right, our experience is 95% of the people using that area are all out of state people. I wish there was a better, more sufficient, but we're doing the best we can with what we have. The trash problem continues to be a problem. Um, and quite frankly, when you're having people are driving 50 and 60 and 70 miles, I'm guessing once they get here and consume what they want to consume, they're, they're perfectly happy to leave their trash wherever they think they can, can get by and, and go off. So that is something we've had talk with DNR about, see what they can do to help. Cause they have principal responsibility for trash, but like everything, everything else, they're shorthanded and lots of other demands going on at the same time. But we try to coordinate with them and we try to get on, we're trying more and more to get on it at the beginning of the problem. Not later in the day when there's already 50 or a hundred cars are legally parking along the roadway.
Hey, thank you, Sheriff. Questions?
Uh, Sheriff, this is Ralph. Uh, the county owns Molten Park, which is up dam. Do we own anything elsewhere? There's congregations? And if so, are we having a trash problem any of, on, on any of our county property?
Yeah. I mean, the, the Parks and Rec folks have, we have Molten Park. They're not allowing camping at that site at this point. And what they are doing is, is, uh, you know, so they're going down and cleaning. Um, you know, beyond that, there's not much else I can tell you that, uh, that we're aware of. So it does become a, an issue with Parks and Rec. Well, they, you know, quite frankly, it's probably, it wouldn't be enforceable. I mean, obviously letting people camp overnight, we check in the evenings to see if we find folks there and then we'll run them off. In the daytime, it'd be impossible to, to try to keep people off, off the park's property. And we've not been asked to do that in the daytime.
Yeah. And this is Patsy and I really don't want to see people kept off of there. Uh, they have to have a, a way to get out outside and, and, uh, who doesn't love being at the river? You know, I mean, it's a great place to be. My question is, do you think that it would help if there were more, um, trash bins or receptacles there to catch the trash? I mean, I'm sure there, I've seen them overflowing and, um, I think the owners of those properties have a responsibility to provide whatever receptacles are necessary to, so that they don't overflow. And I know that's asking a lot, but I think it's important to the neighbors and to, uh, the county. Um, you know, we don't want it to look like there's trash everywhere.
Uh, I would agree. It, it certainly would be helpful to have more receptacles. Uh, the other downside of that is there's a lot of people who don't like to pay to have their trash removed. So I guess if they start seeing that there's a lot of places where I can bring my trash, I'm just going to drive down there on Thursday evening and, and dump my, my, my trash for the week there rather than pay Apple Valley Waste or somebody else to take it away from me. Otherwise it becomes a cost for someone. And you know, if it's Molten Park, it becomes Parks and Rec, I guess. And, and which I think is part of what we found even, even at the, uh, the spot where the, the energy company has its property. Cause there are people leave bags all over, even though we've got a big trash receptacle bin as well.
Right. Yeah.
Can I also just mention real quick, the other issue you have with the trash that I've been noticing this summer now is that the geese have found out about it. Um, so the, I've seen like 50 geese at a time in the trash, pulling it all out and everything. And that is a, it's, it's all the, uh, Canadian geese, but they're dragging it all over the place now. They get, they actually, cause the trash guys don't have lids, they literally get in there and just drag it out all over the ground.
Correct. And then the wind comes up or a storm comes up and it all blows all over the place.
Yeah. So, um, additional law enforcement as far as the parking issue. And I know the litter is hard to enforce unless you actually see somebody throw a bag down and walk away from it. Um, what other solutions can we bring to the conversation here?
Well, I mean, on household littering, it's, it's, it's a, uh, situation where like I was explaining a minute ago, if somebody started using it as their, their personal dumping site, not just people coming down to visit them. You know, Matt and I have talked, Matt, Matt prosecutor and I have talked, that, you know, it is prime face of evidence. If we find your name and information in the trash, that we can charge you for illegally, you know, littering or dumping. Um, but you know, for the people out of state, hmm, probably not going to have, they're probably not going to bring their mail, uh, and other personal identifiable information and leave that in their trash.
You know, years ago, uh, when I was a magistrate, I know we used to be able to sentence people to, for litter pickup. As, um, a result of, uh, if they had been charged with littering or maybe other things too. I don't know if that's still happening or not, but I think that could be something that would be able to, to at least help gather it up and then maybe have, um, have it picked up. I think, um, you know, I don't know if the state road used to come along, but it says it's private property, it might not apply there. But I just wonder if that's even a possibility that we could, we could have people that have been, um, sentenced, uh, as part of their sentence to pick up litter down along that area. It's not along the highway. I mean, I guess it could be along the highway, but.
Commissioner Nolan, I, I don't know if the prosecutor, I believe is online. Uh, he might want to speak to that issue because I know he is, you know, typically pretty concerned about, uh, the litter in the county. He's.
Sure.
He's done some things to try to make that work out.
Mr. Harvey?
Can, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so there, there's a, a distinction here that, that needs to be made is there's a difference between sentencing someone to home confinement and sentencing someone to litter, uh, pickup. Those are two separate programs in the code. Um, this county right now does not have that, anything that I'm aware of as far as a litter pickup program. Everything's been going to community service through either the sheriff's office or one of the local municipalities that have the program set up. Um, we have been working, um, looking at, uh, making some recommendations to, uh, establish or reestablish, if there's one on the books previously, a litter control program. That would, um, someone like in your, like you were asking Commissioner Nolan, um, they can be sentenced specifically to litter control, uh, and litter pickup alongside the roads. And that would probably, um, probably could include, uh, around that park area. I don't think stepping, uh, it would probably even be safer, especially along that stretch of the road to step off the side of the road and into the park area and pick up trash.
Right.
And you know, one of the consequences of being charged with littering is that you're supposed to be sentenced to litter pickup.
Right.
Um, and people that are given probation in circuit court are required to participate in a litter pickup program as well. And we're lacking that right now. Uh, it may take the commission to hire or designate someone as the, a litter control officer. And I think that that would be, um, I mean, not just for this area, but when I, you know, drive up Route nine or 340 or 115, there's, there's litter all over the roads.
It's everywhere. Yeah.
It is.
Yeah, I completely understand, Sheriff.
Yeah. I mean, you can, you pick a road and, and there's a problem. And, um, you know, I think that there, it, it would be useful to approach the owners of the Millville Quarry about the issue of people dumping on their land. And maybe see if there's some sort of resolution or understanding that could be made with them. It may, it may mean that they post no trespassing signs or put some sort of obstruction up to keep people off of their property. Um, but you, you, you know, if you push them out of one area, they're just going to go right down the road and dump as well. And, and we're just, you know, three card money.
Well, I. I was going to say, I agree with Matt. Uh, we did have the litter pickup early in my prosecutor's, uh, period, but I think the problem came to the people who were supporting it, were supervising it. And then they've basically retired and we didn't have anybody else step up and take over. And, uh. Go ahead.
And it doesn't, it wouldn't have to be a, a certified deputy either. Um, that would, you don't want to take a certified police officer off the road. There might, the sheriff might be able to support the efforts with some reserve deputies for traffic monitoring and safety issues. Um, and I, I think if you created that position, I don't think you'd have any problem filling it.
Uh, that, that was my question too. I thought it could hopefully be, you know, a, uh, reserve position. And I see the sheriff shaking his head, yes.
Let me, let me just say, uh, several years ago, some of you may recall, the Solid Waste Authority was, was working with us on doing that. They had gotten a small grant from the state to, to do it. The real question becomes, you know, not only the enforcement of it and, but it also becomes sort of, you know, do, do we need to sort of be there and watch them do it? Or do we simply leave them in an area and come back periodically and check to make sure that they've actually done it? Cause I think that's what satisfies the, uh, the statute. Cause as Nolan points out, I was, I was a magistrate when that first came into, into play. And I remember the first person that took advantage of, of going and picking up trash came back afterwards and was just incensed because they were down there along Augustine Avenue and picked up trash from sort of all the way down to what would be the new, uh, uh, section of Route, Route, uh, 340. And came back and told me how incensed this person was because somebody had the nerve to throw some trash out as they were out there picking the trash up. So it's also a good obstacle to us. Um, but it does take some manpower, obviously to, uh, to, to make sure it gets done. But it may be something, again, we can talk with Solid Waste Authority about in, 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 in seeing they may be able to go back and there may be some other funding that would help, help support the action.
I was just going to comment that, uh, Matt mentioned, um, circuit court. And at one time we had a probation officer who was interested in it and I, when he retired, that, that sort of went by the wayside too.
Well, we, we do have a probation officer that's very interested in it now, and I've met with her. And it's something that the judges and magistrates are certainly interested in as well. And it's, it's important, I think, is there's a, there's a rehabilitative aspect to this is when, if you're, you take from the, you harm the community and then you have to give back to the community. Um, there's a sense of, of ownership in your community by doing so. And you're probably less apt to throw out, uh, a bag of McDonald's next time if you have to go and pick it up. And you, you, and honestly, cause I do litter pickup with the Rotary on Augustine Avenue. And it's, I'm never, I, I'm never cease to be amazed at what people actually discard on the side of the road.
Yeah, it is disgusting, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think those are, I think this is, um, uh, I believe it's been a, a great discussion. If we could get something, uh, going, maybe contact the folks at Eagle Creek, um, that owns the dam. And, and also, I mean, I think they have a responsibility also to maintain that parking lot. Uh, I think that's a safety issue and, um, and I think that maybe the commission, maybe if we. Um, get them involved somehow and tell them that they have to clean it up. I mean, I don't know if we can require them to do it, but we can certainly encourage them to do it. Point out that we're, um, you know, we want to see it, it, because it's a danger, you know? It can be, it can be a safety issue. So maybe that's something that we could maybe send them a letter or maybe do something more. I don't know, uh, what authority we have other than sending a letter that we could require that they, um, and for, I would think it would be a liability to them. A safety issue would be a liability to them, but I'm not really sure. I'm not a lawyer, of course, and I don't want to be, but we have enough of those that are on there right now, I think.
Well, can we get a consensus as a first step, uh, from commissioners that, uh, between our county administrator and our prosecuting attorney and the sheriff? That a letter will be drafted, uh, to, um, I think I have the right, Millville Quarry. And I don't know if we need to do the hydroelectric plant too also and express our concerns and ask for steps to be taken to mitigate the situation?
Yeah. And also the Eagle Creek, because they own the quarry. I mean, they own the dam. So Eagle.
Okay.
Energy. Yeah. That, I, I think that would certainly, uh, go a long way to maybe beginning to, to find a resolution to this problem.
Yeah.
Can I interrupt you real quick, Patsy? Um, one other thing while we're, while we're doing, we, they are required to provide, they have a recreation management plan and they are required to maintain the facilities. And I think we, no one has ever pressured them in the past, so.
Yeah.
They, they're in the business of generating electric. But if, if they got a little bit of pressure to upgrade the facility, it could be a super nice park. I mean, it's really pretty down there and everything, but the facilities in all honesty are just really dilapidated.
Yeah.
Maybe if we encourage them to improve the facilities, it could be a nice park that, you know, local people would want to use. It's just so run down right now that it's like, you know, most local people, I think, don't go down there, honestly.
It's, uh, is, are there consensus? I know Patsy and I are on board with moving ahead with drafting a letter with the, uh, appropriate individuals. Ralph and Josh and Caleb, I haven't heard from you.
I don't have any problem with that, but maybe at some point we need to set up an ad hoc committee so that we just don't let the issue drop it.
Right.
Right.
Well, let's.
What we can do first, um, Commissioner Tab, if, if it's okay for me to say, uh, we can obtain a copy of their, of the mitigation plan that they have. Uh, management plan that they have and then just see exactly what their duties are. And then as, uh, Matt Knott said, you know, we can try to draw those to their attention.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah. Is that agreeable?
Yeah. Commissioner Tab, one quick, one quick comment from me regarding the sheriff's, uh, plan and Solid Waste Authority about the litter thing. I, I'm the liaison of the Solid Waste Authority Board. I know they tried to get this thing going with the sheriff years ago and it just didn't work out. So I don't know if things have changed. I recognize we have an election soon and this won't be the sheriff we're talking to in January. But maybe bring that up again at the board meeting and see if we can change course with that. I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. That was the, uh, second part that I was going to bring forward unless anybody else has any other ideas. Um, thank you, Josh. I think that'd be great to at least start there and we all need to start, uh, looking at solutions. Anybody else?
I just like the idea of, of the ad hoc committee too. So that we can continue to monitor and, uh, be sure that, that, um, you know, we're doing all we can to, uh, keep it clean down there and keep it fine and keep it safe.
So is that something you want to put on the agenda or, uh, and think about who you want on there and how you want to do it?
May I, may I speak real quick? It's Matt Harvey.
Sure.
Um, I, I, I love the idea of the ad hoc committee and, and getting started immediately. Um, I, I just would like the scope of the ad hoc committee to be litter in general for the whole county and not just limited to this one problem area.
Right. That's what I, yeah.
No, I agree because you know, I live on the road that's within a mile of our, uh, transfer station and I get a lot of litter. And people are on the way to the landfill. Yeah. So anyway, okay. Good discussion.
Commissioner Tab, one last thing to that point. I know, uh, a lot of those big trucks are not covering their loads at times. That's where all that litter is probably coming from.
Right. Yes, yes, yes. You're exactly right. So, okay. Good discussion. Uh, more to come and more effort needed.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah. I just want to thank Matt for, uh, Matt actually reached out to me and I appreciate that. And thanks to the sheriff and Mr. Harvey for their input and, and working together to try to get something done and, and, uh, to keep, to keep us moving in the right direction. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Well, Patsy, before you let him go, can we get, uh, Matt to give a, uh, either that he or somebody from his, his group would be on our ad hoc committee if we set one up?
Oh, good idea.
I would, I would be, I mean, we, we think about this issue every summer for years and years. So yeah, I would definitely love some attention to it. I'm happy to be involved.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you. All righty. I'm ready to move on to.
Uh, Jay, did you make a motion for those letters and did we vote on it?
Well, I asked for consensus. If you want to make a motion, we can do that.
Well, if you got a consensus, I'm, I'm agreeable. I'm just, I wasn't sure we had done that. Okay.
Right. Yeah. Since we were, you know, we were developing ideas as we went along. I'm going to move on to agenda item number four. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right. Stephanie, is Mr. Burgess on the line?
Uh, I don't see him. Which is odd that he wouldn't be on. Yeah, he's not. He's not on here.
Hmm.
Yeah, let me send him a text and see.
Well, is Ms. Franklin on?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, good.
Okay. Hi.
Hello.
It's nice to see your, your face.
Thank you.
I'm sorry we can't meet in person. I'm moving on to agenda number, item number four until we can, uh, locate Mr. Burgess. And so you have a grant contract for us, Ms. Franklin?
That is correct. I would like to present the community corrections grant. Um, it's in the amount of $155,000. Um, the grant award is the same as we received last year. Um, we are not requesting any funding. Um, however, it does require cash, cash matched, but it's met through the budget allotment. Um, so right now I'm basically asking, um, that the president sign the contract so we can execute it.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Franklin? About the grant?
No, but I would like a motion that we approve, uh, the request, um, to authorize the president to sign the community corrections grant contract.
Second.
All right. We have any, uh, questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving, uh, the Q, community corrections grant contract, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And, um, Ms. Franklin, I hope to someday soon meet you in real pers- in person.
Yes, and I would like to thank the commission for your continued support.
All right. Well, we know you do. Good work, critical work, uh, and especially critical at this time, as you probably have seen from your clientele. All right. Have a good day.
Thanks you all as well.
All right. I saw Mr. Burgess's shining face for just a moment.
There he is.
There. And just so the public knows, we are back to agenda item number four. Um, Mr. Burgess, you have the floor.
Well, good morning, everyone. Um, thanks to see you all again. A little different, just this format, but, uh, I enjoy it. Um, I'm here to talk with you all this morning, uh, for Andrew Rosen, um, for a promotion and raise from level one IT support to level two IT support. Um, one of the things Andrew has met all of the qualifications for the level two IT support. And I would have been before you before, but we've been delayed considerably by the COVID. Uh, he was finally able to take and pass his Comp Tia Network Plus certification, which was really the last step that, that he needed to do to, um, reach all of the goals for the level two support. As you may know, our department, um, if you're an employee and Andrew here has not only met all the qualifications for the promotion and the raise, but he's really, he stepped up to provide additional services and take on a lot more responsibilities within the department. And, and one of the things I think you all know about IT is, you know, we're not a, uh, eight to five, nine to five. And Andrew has not only been working his normal daily schedule, but he's made himself available both after hours to support those departments that have required assistance after hours. You know, just like the sheriff's department, he's been there for, um, weekends, he's been there after hours. And I mean, a really, really, he's been a great addition. With that being said, I'm open to questions, but I respectfully ask that, um, you guys approve his promotion and raise. So he's, he's been a great asset for the county.
Well, I'm going to take Russ's word for it and I'll move that, I'll move that we approve Andrew Rosen's promotion from level one IT support to level two IT support with a raise in salary from base of a $35,000 per year to a $42,000 per year salary.
Second.
Yeah. I am, imagine the demands on your office right now, your department, Russell, are huge. And, uh, as we all learn new ways to communicate and, uh, try to be transparent with the public, it's, it's a challenge sometimes. So I appreciate, uh, the work your department does. And the motion is before us. Is, are there any questions or discussion?
Well, this is discussion. I just, I noticed that the, uh, channel seventeen was down last weekend is, was there any particular problem for that?
We've had a couple of issues with what they call the head station that's out in Shepherdstown. And they have, um, I don't want to say it's a roving person, but he covers, I think, Jefferson, Morgan, Berkeley, covers a lot of areas. And when we have issues, we're normally contacted to reboot that machine out there. And now I did not know that at the moment, so I will follow up on that and see. If you, um, Ralph, anytime you see that, please notify us because, uh, we can only control the part that's within our infrastructure.
All right. Thank you.
And I just wanted to, um, kind of reiterate the comments about IT. And Andrew, he has really stepped up to the plate. Um, I have personally asked him to help me many times during the COVID pandemic. And he's always, um, there, you know, never complaining, doing whatever he can to help the county. And I also want to give a shout out to IT because we switched there for a while. Almost everyone was working from home. And that process was almost seamless. And that, that is only because of our IT department and the work that they have done. So, um, you know, both Russ and Andrew are, are great assets to this county. And I just, I want to thank them and I wholeheartedly support Andrew moving up, um, to this next level.
Okay. Uh, the motion before us is to approve Andrew Rosen promotion from level one IT support to level two IT support with a raise in salary from base of 35,000 per year to 42,000 per year. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion covers unanimously. All right. Thank you, Mr. Burgess, and thank you, Andrew. Andrew.
Yep. Thank you all very much. You know, your continued support, it means the world. Um, without your support, we would not be able to do what we're doing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And, um, uh, with my fellow commissioners', uh, permission, um, I'd like to complete our other agenda items and then probably take a lunch break and then come back and do the workshop with the way our timing is working. Do I hear any objections or recommendations to do something different?
Nope. Sounds good.
Okay. And I just want the public to know, um, we will probably start the workshop around, um, and our staff. Cause I saw her just come on there shortly. Is it okay with everyone, uh, like a one o'clock, um, workshop? Everybody can have a lunch break and we can finish the items on our agenda.
Good idea.
Okay. Moving ahead, we're on agenda item number six. And that is our prosecuting attorney, assistant prosecuting attorney, Mr. Nathan Cochrane. What do you have for us?
Um, I thought today, today I would go through all of the items in the tail. No, uh,
I can still mute you.
Yes. There she goes with that mute button again. I'm going to pass on, um, most of my things, but I did want to bring up two items and they will, believe it or not, be brief. One, I just wanted to touch base with you about the, um, what was in effect a tie vote on the, um, on the appointments last time. Um, I think that we just basically have to fall back on Robert's rules of order. Uh, it was a tie in effect because of the circumstances. If anything, you know, you, there was, there was, um, well, let's just leave it at that. I won't go through the whole thing. But, um, essentially a tie vote, it means the motion is lost.
Yeah.
There's no action. So I think that we just go ahead and re.
Re-advertise.
Advertise and, and see if there are any other, um, folks who want to apply. Of course, I suppose these folks will be free to reapply if they wanted to.
Okay. All righty.
So, uh, point two. The, um, the Senate Bill six ninety issue, the ATV issue.
Yeah.
There seemed to be some confusion, um, last time. And I have sent to the commission, um, an email and I also sent it to Ms. Grove. There just is a, is sort of a memorandum, just containing just the law. I don't comment on it. I just, you know, kind of organize the law in a way that might help folks, uh, to understand it just a little bit. So, uh, Stephanie, I don't know if you have that. Can you, yeah. So, um, I throw in my disclaimer upfront. There are other laws that apply to this. But this is, this is the new, um, law regarding street legal or special purpose vehicles generally. And street legal special purpose vehicles in particular. And it, uh, it defines them. I just asked the question, what are the street legal special purpose vehicles? And it defines what they are. Uh, and essentially, if you look there at the top, uh, B two defines street legal specialist per- purpose vehicle is a special purpose vehicle that meets the requirements of this section. And then I asked the question, may they be driven on a street or highway? And, uh, yes, if, it says an individual can operate a street legal special purpose vehicle on a street or highway unless in sub paragraph C, it's a controlled access system or the county, um, municipality or the, the DNR where the highway is located prohibits them. So, uh, like we said last time, unless the county enacts an ordinance prohibiting their operation, they can be operated if they meet the requirements to be a street legal special purpose vehicle. And there's a variety of requirements there. Essentially, it's not exactly the same as a motorcycle that operates on the road, but it's similar. There are requirements in there and you have to jump through the hoops to get your, um, special purpose vehicle to become street legal. And those hoops are laid out in this, uh, next page. And, um, that's really all there is to it. Essentially, folks can jump through these hoops, get their, their special purpose vehicle to become street legal by jumping through these hoops. And then they can drive it on the street, much like you would drive a motorcycle. Now, the county commission can change that by creating an ordinance that prohibits them. Uh, I want to make it clear, I'm not advocating that the county commission do that. You know, it's not my job to set your policy. It's just my job to tell you what you can and can't do. And that's pretty much all there is to it. So, uh, I sent this memo to Stephanie. If she wanted to make it a part of the record, then, um, you know, she could do that. But it really just lays out the code.
Is, is our current ordinance effective on this then?
This goes, I think this is like extra outside of our current ordinance. So I don't think our current ordinance, ordinance would prohibit these because this is a new category of, of, um, vehicles. That it can be an ATV. If you look at the definition at the top, it could be other things too.
So, so you're saying our ordinance would not prevent people from doing the street legal thing?
I don't think so.
Okay. So we ta- we'd take us to do another ordinance to, then do that if we wanted to.
Yeah, or just modify our ordinance or something. I mean, if that's what the commission wants to do, I mean, th- these, these vehicles would essentially be like a motorcycle then, you know? And, um, so that would just be something that the commission has to decide based on your policy as to whether or not you want them to, to, uh, operate or not. What I do want to be clear, I'm a, I've heard from different folks, okay? And apparently some people think that because this law was passed, that if you've got just an ATV, you can now drive it on the street.
Okay.
And that's not what this ordinance says. The ordinance says you have to jump through all these hoops. And like, you know, you have to have headlights and taillights, stoplights and all that kind of stuff. And, um, go through registration process and all that to be able to drive them on the street. So, um, but, you know, you can stop even that if you wanted to by creating an ordinance. Again, I'm not advocating that you do that. I'm just saying you could.
Yeah. Hey Nathan, Josh, I mean, if you look at some of those things that need to be added to make it street legal, I mean, this is a lot of stuff here. I mean, almost somewhere it looks like it's probably better than motorcycles. I mean, I'm not i- in the favor of making a new ordinance after looking at these requirements. I think you're going to see a lot of people not being able to meet these requirements anyways.
Yeah, yeah.
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 That's right. And what, what people just need to know is that you're, you just can't jump on the ATV that you currently have and start driving it on the street because this law was passed. But if you want to, you can create your ATV so that it, it could drive on the street, assuming that you can meet all these requirements.
Okay.
But it is a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. Yeah. Thanks for that clarification. That helps me. Yeah.
So that's all I have.
Anyone else have questions on this subject?
No, I just, that, uh, you know, I, I'm not interested in creating another ordinance. I mean, this really does, I think it provides for a safe vehicle. It's almost like, uh, it's not, I guess it's not really an inspection. Would it have to go? Well, if it's registered, it has to be inspected. So, you know, that would help, that would help, uh, help it meet the safety requirements that, you know, for the ATV rider as well as those that are, um, and, or whatever special vehicle it is. As well as, um, a regular vehicle that has to be, that also has to meet those same standards.
Yeah. Yeah. Any other questions for Nathan on this or any other subject on his list, uh, his agenda list? Thank you very much, Nathan.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, let's see. I'm moving down to agenda item number 10. I've, uh, pulled agenda item number nine off the agenda unless somebody has a burning desire to discuss it. And I've asked that before. So we're on number 10, discussion of executive order on building and rebuilding monuments to American heroes. We got a, basically got a copy of the order and I think they want our opinion on a couple of things.
Well, I think part of the problem is our issues may be different than what they're talking about. At least the emails I've gotten, you know, people are complaining, some people are complaining about names. Street names, maybe school names or whatever. County commission probably has very limited ability to address. probably has very limited ability to address current street names, which are a part of subdivisions. Now, we may have some ability to do something in the future on future planned subdivisions and names and stuff, but I'm not sure we have, the county has a lot of statues sitting around.
Well, let me go through the three questions that are in the cover letter and we can decide if we want to answer them or not. Does that make sense to everybody?
Sure.
Sure.
Okay. Number one, are there locations of natural beauty within your unit of local government that would serve as a reputable location for these monuments, statues, and the National Garden of American Heroes? Please list and describe any such locations. And in the letter, their preferences for lands and federal ownership. I don't think the parks would really like us to offer their property, but that's just my personal opinion. What do other commissioners think?
Well, I, I agree. I don't think, you know, we don't want to, I don't know that we really want to pass it along to parks that are not within our-
Jurisdiction.
Jurisdiction. I mean, can't, we couldn't, I wouldn't think.
I wouldn't think so either.
They have no control over municipalities at all or what they do.
All right. I'll go on to question number two. Are there any statues or monuments your locality can donate or loan to this effort that would honor our nation's heroes? I don't know that we own any statues or monuments.
I'm not aware of any.
I can't think of any either.
Not that I know of, but then things pop up, but I, not that I know of.
And then, let's see. There are 31 individuals listed in the executive order. Are there any other American heroes that should be recognized in the National Garden of American Heroes? Please list and describe.
I think that's an open-ended question. I'm not sure.
I agree.
Yeah.
I mean, everybody, everybody has heroes. I'm not sure some of them should be in the form of statues, but I think that, you know, I think it's a personal, you know, it's a personal feeling or a personal choice of who you think you're, who our heroes are.
Yeah. Does, anyone want to have any specific response to these questions or just a general letter back that, you know, we have nothing to offer or no recommendations? Or how do you want to proceed?
Yeah, I think a general letter, I think, I don't know, we couldn't get too far into the weeds, but just because I don't know that we really have anything, but I think a general letter would be sufficient if everyone else's agreement, in agreement.
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Nolan. I mean, or even to the extent that there may be other entities within the county that could offer some, some sort of statue that we just don't maintain or control perhaps. I don't know.
Yeah. I don't know either. Is everybody agreeable to that, a general letter back? Saying we, we don't have much here that we are personally in control of to offer at this time? I mean, the commission, not that I'm in, yeah. All right. I'm feeling I've got a consensus here and everybody's agreeable to a general letter in response to how we've discussed these questions. Everybody agreeable? I'm waiting to hear an objection. Okay, hearing none, by consensus, we will respond to this letter with our general answers that at this time, we don't have any information to share. Okay. We are at a number, well, it's listed as number 12. We, there's no number 11 on this, just a slight typo, but while I was assembling my notebook, I realized my numbers were off and couldn't figure it out. We have a contract lease with the Department of Health and Human Services. Stephanie, I think this is routine we do all the time. Can you give us some background on that?
Our health department, this is the actual state HR that maintains an office in Bardine. It's a state office and they've been renting that space.
Since forever.
Yeah, because I've been here. So, I mean, it's just, it's just a renewal of that same, that same lease.
Okay.
Well, I'll just move that we approve the lease for the Health Department, Health Department of Health and Human Resources as presented in the agenda.
Agreed.
Okay. We have any questions or discussion on the motion? All those in favor of approving the lease with the Department of Health and Human Resources, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? And just to clarify, this lease is between the county commission, Jefferson County Commission and the Department of Health and Human Resources.
Yes.
All right. I see no other business besides our workshop. And as I discussed before, we're going to take a break and come back at one o'clock so everybody can have a lunch break and then hopefully a productive workshop and just for, so the public understands this is not the public hearing on the solar text amendments. We have to set a date for that and that date is required to be within 60 days of when it was presented to the county commission, which will put it sometime in September. And I don't have that date in front of me. So there will be a public hearing on this, but at this time, it's a workshop between the county commission and our own staff. So, everybody in agreement to recess at this time and reconvene at 11 o'clock? I have an 11 o'clock. One o'clock?